I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do our windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINIES. Just call. Thank you.
I'm Arthur Boyle, Performance Appraisal Services. We're residential real estate appraisers. We're the company founded in 1994 by Mike Giannelli and I in the basement of my house in Malden. We've since grown to have offices in Malden and Pembroke. We serve the eastern Mass counties, including Cape Cod. A good client for us is an attorney, or a private landowner, or a private property owner, who's going through a probate process, or a divorced division of property. Call us at 781-293-6900. Ask for Arthur Boyle, or Amanda Boyle Graziosi. Our first name is Performance.
Good evening, and welcome to the Monday, January 30th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We will begin with the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15, and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. First item on our agenda tonight is to consider reducing the number of members of the Town Government Study Committee. Dan, can I ask you to explain that for us?
Right. The Town Government Study Committee has been in effect for nearly two years, and we've been having trouble getting the quorum together. There are the core of three folks that are left over, and we'd like to reduce the number of members to five, so that those three could be a quorum. And of course, we always put a call out for citizens who want to get involved and join. So there are still two seats remaining that are open. So hopefully, we can get some interest. And it's an important committee for the future of Pembroke, to lay the groundwork, do the research, to bring it to the Board of Selectmen, and eventually, the town meeting for any governmental change. So if you'd accept a motion, I'd make a motion to reduce the Town Government Study Committee to five members.
We have a motion, a second by Arthur. Any questions for Dan? It's self-explanatory, and it's a committee we want to support, and get them working on the important work that they've undertaken. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that's unanimous. Next item on our agenda for tonight is a request from the Curriculum Coordinator for World Languages at Pembroke High School, Christine Noguer. She's a Spanish teacher, and together with teacher Sarah Gregg, they will be taking a group of Pembroke students to Spain for the second year in a row for a cultural exchange. The students from Spain, the past two years have come to Pembroke, and have done the same thing, staying with Pembroke families. So when they go to Spain again, February 17th through the 25th, the mayor of Alcasson will be giving them a reception to celebrate the link that they have forged between the two cities and schools. So what she's asking us to do is if we will accept making a... an agreement, well, I guess it won't be an agreement. It'll just be a decision on this board, that we will have a sister-city relationship between Pembroke, Massachusetts, and Alcasson, a sister-city in Spain. So I have no questions from the Board. This is something that we've done several years ago with the city of Wales. So it's not the first time that this has come before the Board. That was a while ago.
Mr. Chairman, is that... not they visiting there very soon?
We are going there this time. I don't know if they'll be coming here later in the year or not. 22 students is what they have, so it's a great program. And Christine Noguer, the Spanish teacher at Pembroke High, has done a lot of work on this with great results. So if there's any other questions from the Board, to have a motion that we ask, well, we're asking Pembroke to make Alcasson a sister-city.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Arthur. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that's unanimous. Thank you. Next item for us is a request from Camp Pembroke Alumni Road Race, May 21st, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It's a request from Ellen Felcher, who was the director of Camp Pembroke. They ask us for this every year. The route will start at Town Green, down Center Street, to High Street, to Mountain Avenue, back to Center Street, and ends at the Town Green. It's Sunday, the 21st of May, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. They've talked to Chief Wall, and they have preliminary approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to grant that. Road race for the day on Center Street, to go down High, Mountain Avenue, and back into the center, pending the approval of the Chief of Police.
Motion by Bill, is there a second? Second by Arthur. Any questions?
There've been... Camp Pembroke has been very good to us every year, you know, by putting money into an account for the town to use, in lieu of taxes, so... this is definitely a good cause, so I think we should grant it.
I would agree. A motion and a second. All those in favor of the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. I rule that unanimous. Does the Board have any old business that they would like to bring up at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Town Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of items on projects that we've got going on. I've been conversing with the Town Manager in Duxbury about the truck exclusion project for Valley and Burke Street. And the chairman, we had the chairman draft a letter, and sign a letter on Friday, to be sent to the Duxbury Board of Selectmen, urging them to put us on the agenda in the immediate future, so that we can meet them, get their blessing on an application. That'll be submitted to VASTIOT regarding that project. Also, February 6th, you were scheduled to have a 6:30 meeting, so that you'd be able to attend a 7:00 public hearing by the Planning Board regarding a bylaw change to the Center Protection District Zone. And there was a problem with the advertisement, and Town Council had recommended a new advertising go in, so Sabrina, that's tentatively scheduled for February 23rd?
27.
27. So that'll be the public hearing that the Planning Board would hold. It's a mandatory public hearing on that rezoning issue for the Center Protection District. This Friday at 10:00, I'll be meeting with the department heads to give them a preliminary view of the FY '18 budget that I'll be presenting to the Board of Selectmen next Monday night, and to advisory as well. It appears that it'll probably be within the range of around $66 million. Right now, you know, we're looking at the various requests from the departments, and how it'll fit into the available revenues. Basically, what the Governor announced in his House One proposal was an increase in Chapter 70 money, and a small increase in local aid to municipalities, which is the form of lottery money, so... But I'll have a presentation for the Board next Monday night regarding FY '18's budget.
Very good, Ed. Does the Board have any issues under "Ask the Selectmen"? Hearing none, we'll move on to any issues under "New Business". Hearing none, I will go on to upcoming issues that we'll have before the Board of Selectmen. On February 6th, there'll be a discussion and a review of the minutes and agenda posting to the town website, and the results of a related survey. Also, on the 6th, Kathleen McAfee, the Treasurer, will appear before the Board to talk about an award for a sale of bonds. Also, on February 6th, 99 Restaurant will be before us, and they're going to have a change in their manager. On February 13th, Jennifer Mathias of Hill Boggs, a property that she owns, will give the Board an update on that project. February 13th, there'll be a poll hearing on Elm Street with National Grid and Verizon. So does anybody have any other issues they'd like to bring up at this time? Well, we have a public hearing scheduled at 7:00, and we won't be starting that until 7:00. So we would... we could have a short break, and if there's no other business to come before this Board. So I'll be clear...
Recession until 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Arthur.
Second.
Second by... motion by Arthur, second by Dan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. We'll have a temporary adjournment until 7:00 p.m., when we will begin the public hearing, and we will have Mr. Murphy here.
I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do our windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINIES. Just call. Thank you.
7:00, so I'd like to start this public hearing. I'd like to apologize for the lack of cheers for all of you who took the time to come here tonight. So we'll get going with this public hearing. This advertised public hearing is regarding River Marsh LLC's application for project eligibility site approval to mass housing under the state's comprehensive permitted statute, Mass. General Law's Chapter 40B. And Brian Murphy of River Marsh LLC has submitted a proposal to build a development consisting of 14 buildings, containing 68 townhouse condominiums located on a 49.94-acre parcel of land located at 274 Water Street. A copy of the petition and the plan have been available in the Selectmen's office, and are here this evening. The purpose of the hearing, one of them, is to allow the town to submit to mass housing any responses from the public, and from different departments within the town, like Conservation, the Board of Health, the Police Department, et cetera. So we have a timetable to respond to mass health, and the Board of Selectmen will do that, and we will meet the deadlines. When Mr. Murphy is through with his presentation, I'd like the opportunity to have the Board of Selectmen ask him any questions. And then at the conclusion of our questions, we will open up to the public, to you that are here tonight, the time to ask any questions that are on your mind about this project. And when we get into that part of the hearing, anyone who would like to ask Mr. Murphy a question, or the Board of Selectmen, if you'd please come up over here to my right. We have a podium with a microphone, so everyone can hear you. And we'd like you to give us your name and your address, so that we can record properly the people that speak tonight. So without any further ado, I'll turn this over to Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. My name is Brian Murphy. I represent River Marsh LLC, the applicant for the River Marsh project. I'm here with Warren Baker, who is my consultant, and also attorney. And what I hope to present to the Board is just kind of informal... some information that we have as far as the submittal, and be able to really kind of quickly get to people asking questions after that. The stage that we're in right now is we have submitted our application to the state. The state reviews it, takes comments. This is all part of the process, is that we... comments are sent from residents, and from the boards and committees of the town, to the state, and the state then weighs in on all of that, and issues, or doesn't issue, an eligibility letter for the project. So we haven't even really gotten off square one yet, beyond putting the application to the state. So as far as the project is concerned, the parcel is off of Water Street here. This is the existing conditions. So thank you whoever put this up. I brought it myself, but this is great. This is Water Street here. Here you have Church Street, 139. You have Lowe's up here. You have Stop &amp; Shop up here, and obviously Route 3 up in this direction as well. North River is over in this section here. There is a house here that is owned by the applicant, and there is an easement here coming off of Water Street. Both, as you'll see in the proposed project, are being used for access. The site does have a lot of wetlands, based off of some flagging that was done about 10, 12 years ago or so. But there is, on almost a 10-acre parcel, there is still a lot of uplands that we're obviously looking to develop. So as far as the existing wetlands, just sort of what he knows, because I noticed this question on the site walkthrough, we will need to have a weapon scientist go through, and re-flag, to see where, if any, wetlands have accrued. It's at that point that the town has somebody go out and verify that flag, and we all come to agreement what the weapon line is between the town and us, the applicant. And then that is set flagging for that site. So again, this is preliminary, and older flagging. Traditionally, they don't move all that much, but you never know. So, based off of what we know, I presume must be... Based off of what we know, we have filed an application for 68 townwide units. Because of 40B, 25% of them will be affordable. And that is folks who are generally, more than 75% of the usual income.
P. D. A.
P. D. A. of the income. And in Norwalk, for example, we're doing a project, and that's about units for about $180,000. And that'll change based off of, you know, the town. But that's roughly what a unit and affordable unit will go. As we... as you come in, you'll see that there are mostly four or five units, only some three sprinkled in here. There is, as I mentioned before, access there, here and here on Water Street. There is a wastewater treatment plant. And wastewater treatment plant is something that is permitted through the state, and it handles a large gallonage of wastewater. And it is monitored by a contracted and licensed company that will come out on almost a daily basis, and monitor the site, and put in whatever bugs, or whatever things to balance it out, if needs. What else? Oh, we are proposing a walking path out to an upland area that's up here. There's really no real development beyond, we're hoping to have a board walker of some sort to get over to it, just kind of add to the attractiveness of the project. This area here, there's a lot of questions on the site walk, where a lot of the retaining area for the runoff will go. Again, very preliminary. We still have to go back out and look at soils, and things of that nature. And that's all part of the process. There is a crossing here, all things that we'll have to go through, Conservation, and potentially nasty paper to get permitted. Warren, anything you want to bring up at all?
Not yet.
Okay. So that is the project, that's the proposal. And I guess I would just say we can open up the questions to the Selectmen, and they can ask, and go from there.
Good, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Dan, did you want to have any question you'd like to ask?
A basic opening question. If you could just explain to the Board and to the residents, why a dense Chapter 40B project fits in this site, in your opinion?
As far as density goes, it may look dense from a... on a piece of paper here, but when you look at it from a state average, it really is not that dense of a project. There is 50 acres on that site, and we're really only using a fraction of that land. And there'll be... so there is a lot of open space. I'm very... I just will say, I'm unapologetic about density, per se, because I've done a few of these, and I think they're generally a... when they're all said and done, they're a benefit to a town, and they're something that it's not necessarily, you know... I don't see it as an extremely dense project. I see it as a project that's fitting for the 40B type of project.
Right, and that's what I asked for, your opinion, so I appreciate that. So for the public, Chapter 40B proposals can be brought into any town in Massachusetts where you have less than 10% of affordable housing. And we are, at last count, Ed, about 9.68%?
9.65.
9.65, so...
I'm sorry, when was that last count? Was that...
It was about a year ago, because we had a Chapter 40B come in last year. So that's fairly accurate.
The date that the HCD is reported, November 29, 2016.
And it includes projected, like, new projects that have been approved?
It doesn't include Copperwood, which is the one down on Burke Street.
It does?
It does not. And if you included Copperwood, then that would bring, which has nine affordable units down there, that would be... that would put the town's total up to 9.79.
So it's the nine units that are counted, not the development as a whole?
That's correct.
So we have... so to get up to the 670 or so that we have right now, that is... there are... there must be... how many... where did all those numbers come from?
Right now, we're about 22 units short of 10%. So the Copperwood project on Burke Street, it has nine affordable units, at a total of 34, and that brings us up to 9.79. And Mr. Murphy's proposal includes 17 affordable units, a total of 68, which is 25%, which is all that's required. And that would put the total number of units up to 651, which would put the town three units over 10%. So that's just the math right now.
And Pembroke Woods is requesting to have another 100 units?
Yeah, what happened, Pembroke Woods was built before the 2010 census. And the base number that the state uses is the census every 10 years. And the town's census in 2010 for year-round housing is 6,477. Pembroke Woods put us over that, because all of Pembroke Woods counted, because it's all rental. But these are homeowner-occupied, and therefore, the developer is only required to produce 25% of that. Now, he could add more if he wanted to, but he's required to have 25%.
Any other questions from the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, Ed, if you could just continue on that vein, and mention the 10% rule for a 40B, the land mass rule?
Right, you know, and I know our chief assessor, Kathy Simmons, in the audience, and we're working on a report that we would file with Mass Housing regarding the rule. Kathy, might just want to explain that very briefly?
Sure, if you want me to go up there and get it...
Sure, please.
Hi, so the... there are two measures to meet the 40B requirement. The one that is most known is 10% of the housing stock. And Ed just spoke to those numbers. There is a lesser-known one, where if 1.5% of your land area is covered with affordable housing units, you could be considered to have met the threshold. It's a complicated procedure to go through and to calculate that. There are a lot of exceptions, and a lot of deductions that we can do. But we're in the process of that. And what will happen is, once the town is done with that review, if we determine that, yes, we believe we have the 1.5 minimum, there is a timeline from when the first comprehensive permit hearing is held by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Once that happens, if the town wants to submit to the state that we've met this requirement, the town will submit a copy of the findings to both the applicant and to the state within 15 days of that comprehensive permit hearing, which I don't know yet when that would be scheduled. And then from then, the state determines, and they look at your work, and they say, yes, we agree, or no, we don't agree, and, you know, they make questions in parcels. So at this point, we think it's a possibility that we've met this other threshold, but we don't yet have that. But we will have it for when we're doing the comprehensive permit hearing.
Arthur?
Yeah, Kathy, and the 1.5%, that doesn't...
Yeah, Kathy, and the one point five percent, that doesn't include the large bodies of water and the conservation land and land under conservation control?
No, so there's a kind of a complicated formula, but essentially you say, we have X amount of acres in town. And then from that, you take out bodies of water, land that has conservation restrictions, land that's owned by either local government or federal government, land that's owned by other towns. There are all these allowable deductions, and you come to a reduced value. And it's that reduced value that we say, well, what is one point five percent of that reduced value, so many acres? And then we go to our housing stock, our affordable housing stock, the D H C D gives us, and we say, do we cover at least one point five percent of this reduced total land area?
So, we have a realistic shot at this?
So, we have a reasonable shot, and it's certainly in the town's best interest to make sure if we've met it, that we submit that. And all that that means is that the town, then, has some ability to say, yes, we like a project, or no, we don't. Because without meeting one of those thresholds, the ten percent or the one and a half percent, the town really is very limited in its ability to pick and choose what they would want.
Okay, any other questions from the Board? Bill?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions there. I'm looking at the protection order from the North River. There's lots, three, four, five, eight, and nine, and also the roads and the turnabouts and all that, that are within that jurisdiction. And could you explain how you're going to get by that with the North River Commission? By saying that, that that's going to be a lot, because I've been on the board for probably the last three or four years or whatever, and they won't even let, they won't even let one of the people put a fireplace, you know, a man-made fireplace on the property that's anywhere within, within that scenic view, so.
Yeah, the North River Commission is a group that we will need to go in front of. I've never been in front of them before. I do know that I need to go in front of them. I have read their rules and regulations. We are going to have to find out whether we are going to be able to permit, and this is the line here, if anybody's, the line goes through here. So, there are about seven units and seven structures that's part of that line. But yes, I've, I've heard that it is a difficult process and we will, we're going to find out. But as I said, we're here, very preliminary state, we know that's part of our process.
The other, the other thing I had a concern about would be any kind of drainage that would go into the river area or marsh from the project, from asphalt or cement or whatever the runoff. And you had said that there's a wastewater treatment plant, but I looked on it, I don't know where it is.
The plant, it's, the facility itself will be in this, this area, with the leaching field probably in this area as well. The historical good soils on this, on this site have been in that area. So, that's where the preliminary plan is right now.
Would that be within the three hundred foot?
No.
No, that's, that's inside that?
It'll be outside of that.
Outside of that, okay.
And as far as stormwater, we are going to have to comply with all the stormwater regulations, and it'd be, have to be engineered, and there'll be a review engineer that'll be hired by the, by the town to be able to check what our engineer comes up with as far as a retention and detention areas and whatnot for stormwater, stormwater runoff.
Okay. The other question I had was about the traffic congestion in the area. And Route one thirty-nine being so close to your project, coming out on a small residential street and, and a lot of traffic, a lot of accidents in that area there. And I, I just have a concern, from being a past police officer, that I've responded to a number of them, bad, bad motor vehicle accidents in that particular area there. So, is there anything in your development stages there that you have that concern about that, that?
Well, what we, as part of the process, we hire a traffic engineer. And they come out and they review all of the traffic with, on Water Street, on one thirty-nine, at this intersection, intersection that would be up where the memory care facility is now, we'll, we'll be doing a study on, on all of that. And we leave it up to them as far as their calculations, to see what, what the traffic is and what, if any mitigation needs to be done for that.
So, is that, is that something that they would make a recommendation to you, that you would do, or would be something that the town would have access to that also by saying, there's something that you need to do in order to put the project in, to make it safer for the people?
Both.
Both?
Yeah, potentially. We've had some developments where, you know, the traffic engineers said, well, you know, this is an intersection that's, that's half a mile away. Really, it's not going to be very much affected by the existing, or the incoming developments, but, you know, here are some things that the town could do to, to make that better. If it relates directly to the project, you know, there'd be recommendations to us as the developer.
Okay.
One else?
Yeah, I have a statement more than a question. Given that this is a, an incredibly environmentally sensitive area in terms of the river, the wetlands, I mean, it's called River Marsh. There's a habitat for wildlife and plant life, as well as the sensitivity of the groundwater and the character and the history of the neighborhood. If this is granted, it's a change forever. We have been good stewards of the affordable housing law in Pembroke. We've got nine and point seven nine percent, or whatever the figure was tonight. So, we've stood behind the Mass Housing and done the right thing in many instances, but I think this is the wrong project in the wrong place. I will, at the end of the public hearing, move that the selectmen support a one-year moratorium on the construction of multi-unit buildings in the town to give us a chance to get our records straight and do an environmental study on the area, because we ran into it several years ago on the property off of Bird Street or Chapel Street, I don't remember which. And there were painted turtles and other wildlife found there that couldn't be replaced, and the project didn't go. And if you remember, the, the older couple that were here, they were butters to it and they said that they had no chance of stopping it, and they did stop it. So, it's not a, an impossible task. So, I will wait for the comments of the other selectmen and the folks in the audience before you close the public hearing. It's like an opportunity to make that motion.
Any other questions, anybody? I think that's, sorry, Dan?
So, I, before we turn it over to the public, I just want to remind the public that this meeting is for the Board of Selectmen to hear comments, to ask, ask questions to the applicant, and hear comments and questions from the audience, from the residents. We'll compile all those questions. We are taking, taking minutes. Meeting is being recorded, so we will take all those questions and we will submit them in writing to Mass Housing. So, any questions, comments, or recommendations that this, this board has, as well as the comments of the public, will be, will be recorded and given to Mass Housing, either in, in support or opposition to the project.
I'd just like to say, before we get into questions, that the board was represented at the walk-through that we had, as well as we had the police chief, the fire chief, we had conservation, we had our health agent there. So, I think the right people who would represent you from the town were there. So, we can look at this map, but if you were actually there, it gives you a better picture of what is being proposed. So, I think that's a, a plus for all of us.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to open this up now to questions, and if you'd please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and we're going to have the opportunity for everybody to be heard. We're not going to rush you out of here, okay? Jim McCollum?
Point of affirmation, I was at the walk-through, we were not allowed to walk through. We were shown, the health agent and I walked down one of the entrance ways to the bottom of the house next door, and that's as far as we got. Nobody else came down there. Nobody got close to walking through this project, nobody.
The only thing we did do was, is go on another person's property, went all the way down almost to the river, and we could see through the wooded area or whatever, but we weren't on that property.
I wasn't part of that.
Yeah, we did, we did walk all the way down almost to the river.
Yes.
Hi, Samantha Woods, Executive Director for the North and South Rivers Watership. I guess I just, we'll be writing our own comments about this, and one of the things that I wanted to bring up was that, you know, I just looked on the Massachusetts geographic information systems for different resources that are on the property, one of which is the priority habitats for rare and endangered species, which is a state program, state law that protects endangered species. So, you know, it's something that we should bring up in our comments, that this property has endangered species on it, and that the applicant will need to go through that process that might actually inform the Mass Housing of the sensitivity of this particular area, a little bit more beyond. And I would urge the selectmen to ask your staff to look at all those different habitats, resources that are available on Mass G I S, so that you can bring them up and bring them to the awareness of the State Board. They don't necessarily know unless you tell them. And I don't think the applicant has put the resource area on his proposal. So, those are the kinds of things that you, as the selectmen, should think about, having your staff really look into what the resources are, so that you can make a cogent argument for why this is a particularly sensitive area. So, I just wanted to kind of highlight that. I know, because I've worked in another, not only this river, but in another river, where we actually did bring up some resources that were not made known to the housing authority, and when those resources were made aware, they said, no, you're right, this isn't the right place for it. So, they have been known to look at those issues, but you have to display them for them. So, I'll do my best, but I would really appreciate some help with the conservation information.
I'd like to recognize Judy Parks. Judy is a former Zoning Board of Appeals chairman and has dealt with Forty B projects in the past.
Hi, thank you. Again, Judy Parks, I was the chair of the board from nineteen, ninety-seven through two thousand and seven. So, I have permitted most of the Forty Bs. I led the board when we did the most of the Forty Bs, Pembroke Woods, all of those. I also walked this property, because this was also a, there was a subdivision submitted for, you know, the number of variances by, by Bill Murphy, so I've actually walked this parcel. I don't believe, I mean, I don't, I don't, I was asking, what is the actual number of acres that is actually upland that you're going to be building on? How do you mean?
Eighteen point five.
Because the parcel is very wet, and it is really, you know, again, for in terms of looking at a Forty B, we've been very sensitive where we put them. We tried to put them in areas that have not had environmental issues, have not had, were not close to large developments on, on small residential streets. So, and my, my whole field, my, my life is of inaffordable housing, but I really feel I cannot support this, because of the, where it's located and the fact that, I would be curious, the number of variances this would require where this irregular subdivision is opposed to a Forty B. Because I know at the time, there were a number of variances that were required in order to get the subdivision. The other two, I, again, I was making more of a question for the zoning board hearing, but the width of the roadway, I don't know whether that's a subdivision roadway with sixty-eight units, which is a fairly large development for a small roadway, so I think there are a lot of questions that have to be answered by the applicant in order for this to be supported by the town. I think the town has made a very good effort to reach the affordable housing commitment that the state has, and I think that we, you know, again, have been trying to be very sensitive to the residents of the, of the town, have been done that. So, I think we should continue with that, thank you.
I think I cut off a question to the previous lady.
Yes.
Did you, did you get an opportunity to answer that question?
Somebody asked me my name.
Oh, it's okay.
(laughter)
Oh, I'm sorry.
North Rivers Watership.
Okay, thank you. Do I have anyone else? Gentlemen, yes?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Scott Chapman, and I live at two twenty-six Water Street. If I may use the map here, my property probably has the largest exposure to this project along here. It's a fabulous place to be. And I can tell you firsthand that it's very wet. I'd point you out to this area here, which I could not call it, I'm not a biologist, to call it a vernal pool, but it is completely and totally dependent upon rainwater. And it is a habitat for waterfall, it is a habitat for a number of amphibians, there are predatory birds, there's a population of red-tailed hawk, there are owls, there are, of course, coyotes that we're all familiar with, and there are also small prey mammals that are abundant. I think the biggest concern that I have here is, this was characterized as not a very dense development. I would take issue with that. For those of you who wish to get a very good look at this project, you are hereby invited to come onto my property as my guest at any time and walk this area halfway down the driveway. You will see this pool of water that stands there that has a fair, fairly deep extension into the proposed project. I know it because we lived there, and that's where my kids and I skate in the wintertime, and that's where we, my kids have grown up, so we know the property well. I would say, I would ask Mr. Murphy, you have a proposal for a wastewater treatment plant? If you could point that out to me, I'd really like to see that. What would that be, sir? And could you kind of define that for us? Because I don't know what that means.
Well, there's no, there's no, there's no sign yet for it. The area is generally in here. The way a wastewater treatment plant works is that all the wastewater from every one of these units goes to a treatment, building, we'll call it, that houses the chemicals and the different tanks that actually treat the water, or it is released into a pitching grate. And, you know, the building, in past developments we've done, is like twenty by twenty of quality. And everything is, else is just underground, and it's all handled in one specific area.
I'd also like, if you would, if you could address, you stated that, in general, you see that these kinds of projects are benefits to the communities and to the neighborhoods that you have been able to develop in the past. Could you tell us and the group assembled here, you know, what benefits do you see this neighborhood really reaping from this?
Okay. Again, it's, it's, it's my experience, and people come at this from different paradigms, so, I, you know, I'll tell you what my experience has been. My experience has been that, and this is other towns, I haven't done anything in Pembroke, but other local towns. You have people that come to these, these condos, which are attached condos, they're going to be about probably sixteen hundred to twenty-one hundred square feet. You get a lot of people who are empty nesters, people who for one reason or another want to stay in town, they want to, and this is, this is people who are getting the market rate units. They are a benefit to the town, because a lot of people, you know, their kids go to the school, you know, they, they utilize that service of the town, and then they've got a place, they want to find a place to live. And if they can't find a place to live in your town, they're going to go somewhere else to pay their tax dollars there. Those tax dollars that, you know, they're not, they're not using for paying for their school fees. So, anyways. So, anyways, that's, this one benefit that I've seen in other developments that we've had. I have, the other, the other benefits is obviously the affordable component. There's no more joy than the people who, you're, as you're at the closing table, than somebody who's buying one of these affordable units. Because they, you know, they have people that, you know, they maybe grew up in town, or they're a schoolteacher in the area. These are people who, you know, just can't afford to live in the area, and they, they really appreciate the fact that they have a nice place to live. So, I think that's a benefit. The services, these are all private roads. There's no, there's no plowing, there's no trash collection associated with this, with the town. So, in towns, towns, I don't say specifically in Norwell, where we've done a recent project, a much smaller development, there's well over a hundred thousand dollars net revenue positive for the town because of the type of person, the type of owner that does the trash. So, that's my experience. And that's what I, that's why I.
So, the development in Norwell, is that your backyard? Okay. Just checking.
Thank you, members of the board. I would, once again, like to invite anyone who would wish to come down and take a look at this property. I would tell you that the wastewater treatment plan is gonna be immediately adjacent to my home. So.
I recognize this gentleman here.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
My name's Marty Quinnan. I live at 260 Water Street. I immediately bought the property, my property is, is, is right here, to the point of congestion. This is about a hundred feet from my deck. It's about fifty feet from my pool. It's about fifty feet from the fire pit that my three boys tirelessly put in about two years ago. I will have, be surrounded by two roadways and a condo building. I bought this house in nineteen ninety-seven with my wife. We were twenty-nine years old. We were new to the area. We fell in love with Pembroke. We fell in love with the street. And we were told by the town that this was unbuildable property. The town, the property was assessed at a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars at that time. My land only was assessed at sixty-two thousand dollars. So, forty-nine acres was assessed at not even two times my one acre. Today's value, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the land versus my land of two hundred thousand dollars. Mathematically, I come up with a little more than one house should be able to be built on that property based on what the town has assessed it at, based on what the town told me, and based on the taxes that have been paid. The idea that taxes are gonna come into the town because he puts in sixty-eight units, I'm certain that you all recognize that this will decrease the value of the property along this whole street. It certainly would make it a town that I wouldn't be comfortable living in anymore knowing that these types of developments going. You're creating four corner lots out of none in about seven hundred feet from Route 139. Hairpin turn, this is forty, forty feet wide here. The easement, I'm not certain which one he refers to. I have a slope easement that runs around here. It's not a buildable easement, it's a slope easement. So, taxes, of affordability, I would question the hundred and eighty thousand dollars. My whole thing comes down to the spirit of the law here. FortyB, the builder is supposed to bear the cost. He has a piece of land that has been assessed at, taxed at, considered unbuildable. He's paid very little taxes on that land over the last thirty-five years, at least the twenty that I've been there. He bears no cost. The affordability aspect, I think that Pembroke's median income is a hundred and five thousand dollars. Two thousand and fourteen, the sum of the data was lower, but I did see a hundred and five thousand dollars. I can try to get the, the, where I got that information. Eighty percent of a hundred and five thousand dollars is eighty-four thousand dollars. Using the thirty percent rule, that gets you twenty-one hundred dollars a month for your home. That's a three hundred thousand dollar house. That's fine, whatever, three hundred thousand dollar house is fine. But again, you go to the spirit of the law, the needy aren't really the ones that are being helped. The builder isn't really the one that's bearing the cost. It's me, and it's my neighbors. My house will depreciate in value by twenty-five percent, I imagine, overnight. I've struggled to keep my home, I'm not a rich guy. I look good, my hair looks good. I've struggled, I've struggled to keep my mortgage within the thirty-year time period. I do have some equity in my home. Not a ton. I actually owe more today than I did when I bought the house. Fine, financial mistakes, right? But I am going to lose a hundred thousand dollars overnight so some, in equity, so somebody can put it, can buy a three hundred thousand dollar house. I don't think that's true in needy. He's not bearing the cost. I'm bearing the cost. My neighbor who just moved in, that will be, we will be circled by two streets, two homes right here. This gentleman just bought the house, I don't know, recently. He's out there working tirelessly. I'm embarrassed to show my face on his yard. But I have a number of, you know, so, for me, I know everybody's gonna talk about the wetlands, about the traffic. I mean, this is, this is nineteen feet, so, you know. That road is nineteen feet. This hairpin turn is a disaster. Getting out going left, coming down 139 and taking a left on there is a disaster. Cars are driving at forty-five miles an hour. They aren't expecting people to turn. You stop, they try to go, they try to go around. It's terrifying. Coming from the other direction, when you take a right onto Cross Street, where we still don't know what the traffic implications are gonna be from the new assisted-litter building there, that's terrifying. You have two lanes coming to one right at that turn. The, the risk of getting rear-ended there is daily.
Right now.
I don't know. I mean, I don't want to let other people ask questions. Those are some of the things. For me, for me, there is a personal impact. It's gonna be, this is massively congested. Again, like, I don't, I mean, if you came, you're also welcome to come and see where this, this is inside the tree line. This building is inside the tree line. It's not, it's, it is in my backyard. That's it. Thanks, Scott.
268 Water, and I have the fifty-foot road going next to my house making me a corner. So, the question is, I just walked that space on Sunday after I heard about this. And there's not fifty feet between my property and the other house. Are you taking the other house down? So, where's the fifty feet coming from?
It's on the plan.
So, my house, my property, is not fifty feet. This is, this is your property line? So, where's the, where's the driveway? So, my property line is right up to the driveway?
Probably not. You have a big grass strip. I haven't, obviously, had it staked, but it's probably got some of that grass strip. It's probably on this.
So, just put a gas line in. It went through the town, this was the gas line in. It went to the gas, my head coming from all the permits, I was gonna get the property. My property line is right up to that driveway. That's what, that's what three different agencies, three different people told me.
It's fine, it'll all be staked out, it'll all be engineered, and what we have for our records goes into the, right now.
The other, the other question is, you said you had a twinkle in your eye when you helped some poor person. Shit up! You said you had, you said you got personal enjoyment out of helping somebody get a house that was low income. What kind of enjoyment do you get of taking all these people's values? How else, I just bought this house, it's gonna happen. A hundred thousand dollars for both of us. What kind of enjoyment do you get out of that?
Again, I think everybody's got a different paradigm as far as what they think is gonna happen to their, the value of their homes. I haven't seen that, that happen. So, it's, you and I are gonna look at it from a different perspective. And I can't say anything to change your mind about that.
Yes, gentleman here?
Yeah, my name is Walter Costello, and I'm on Old Landing Road, which is just, look it up from where the tunnel road is going in. And Brian, I might make a comment to you about, if you haven't gone to the North Rivers Watership, you should do it quickly. I have had a very, fairly extensive experience with that, that town. The other, the other comment I wanna make, we've covered a lot here, but in terms of the density, I just wanna put, we've talked about it, but I wanna put a little perspective. Your sixty-eight units is a hundred and ten percent of the volume of the number of families on Water Street, Cross Street, Old Landing Road, and Packet Landing. So, you're doubling the size of the number of families, the number of cars, and the roads that, you know, these are back roads, they're not meant to handle a lot of traffic. Chuck, Chuck and I passed each other on Cross Street and said, "I know the guy!" The mirrors on our trucks hit each other. And, and Cross Street was in much better condition then than it is today. So, it's a, it's a, I don't know if you, you know, part of your proposal is that you replace Water Street with a wider road and Cross Street where, after the, the care facility gets finished, if they ever do. The other, another thing, we talked about here with the water treatment plant, I, I looked at your, your application, and I don't see, I don't know, I don't know what a water treatment plant costs. Each of us here tonight, if we had to replace our septic systems, they're probably worth like twenty thousand dollars a piece. And roughly seventy families at twenty thousand dollars a piece is a, close to a million and a half dollars. So, I have, I guess I would ask you, what kind of budget would you have for a water treatment plant for sixty-eight families?
It's well over a million dollars.
I didn't, could you tell me where that is on your budget?
It's in the application.
Is it called out as water treatment plant?
I, I think I remember it was, yeah.
Okay, I, I didn't see that in your budget?
Yes, well, I'll take a look at it. And that, that application is publicly available. I know that the town has, has a copy.
Oh, the other, the other question I have, again, you're gonna increase the, the number of families by, you know, you're gonna double it. And are you planning on using all of the existing infrastructure, gas, electricity, water, power? Are, are you planning on, you know, increasing these services? I just can't see how, like doubling the demand, it would not affect us.
What usually happens?
Excuse me, excuse me. The meeting's being recorded on video for folks that wanna be here but can't make it. So, if we could just talk into the microphones, that'd be very helpful. There's some elderly folks would love to be here, but they can't.
Sure. What usually happens as far as services, there is engineering done on, especially water, to see whether there is going to be enough water for the development. And they, what they'll do is they'll look at the existing lines, the pressure, and obviously the size of the development, and they'll make a determination of whether there, it can be handled or not. As for gas and electric, it's generally not a problem. If it's there, it's, it's, there's generally capacity.
All right. Well, I mean, I asked, I added a generator, gas, oh, a generator, and I was told that I had to change my meter to accommodate the extra requirement for that amount of gas. So, anyway, that's why I raised the issue. Another question, you had a chart, you have a chart showing sales of condominiums over three hundred thousand dollars in Pembroke since two thousand and thirteen. And on three-bedroom units, in four years, eight of these were sold. And your proposal is for forty-five. So, you're going to, are you planning on having a five-and-a-half-year supply of three-bedroom condos?
That's not uncommon. Five-year build-out for, for that type of development is not common.
Now, is, in terms of the length of construction, are you planning to do this over five years? Or you're gonna try to do it and get out quickly?
The goal of developers always to get in and out as quickly as possible, manage money. But it is most likely going to be a three- to five-year project.
Three, five. This one is just a curiosity. In the application for a 40B with mass housing, that they strongly recommend that you meet with the, the selectmen and the boards of the town to ensure that you understand what the concerns of the town may be regarding the proposed development. And you elected to not to do that, and you went directly to mass housing? Can you tell me why you did that?
Sure. In my experience, it's hard to have, not have something submitted and just kind of, it's, have a nebulous, you know, application out there. It's, what, all I've done is really send an application to mass housing. It's an application or information that I would have to have conversations and whatnot with everybody, with anybody. So, this, it's, this is all fairly normal to actually submit the application and then start having these meetings. Because it's, it, it just makes sense for, for developer, and it also makes sense for people who are, you know, in, in the town, just because it's, it's actually real at this point. People are showing up, they know that, they have all the information, and we can have a detailed discussion.
Well, I, I understand part of it, but the other part is, if there are concerns of the, of the town, then you could have either incorporated it in your plan before you, before you came here.
Right, right.
Or it avoided some negativity.
And, well, I don't know if I actually would, and I'd say, but I think I'm a realist about that. But I, I will say that just because I've submitted the application doesn't mean that, you know, things don't get changed either by me as a developer or by the state. They make suggestions. They may take suggestions from boards, they may take suggestions from, from you all. So, it's, it's far from, what I've submitted is, is far from installed. And so, that's all going to, it's, it's a fluid process. And Warren will tell you, we'll go through the EBA process, and things will change over time. And we'll come out with something that may or may not look a little bit different. So, you know, it's, just because I've submitted, doesn't mean that, you know, it's set in stone and, you know, I've said to everybody else, you know, "I don't care about your comments." I do. But it makes, it, it makes, it's kind of a starting point for us to go about.
You, you have done these 40Bs before, other locations. Have you ever had a 40B that had these entrance and exit onto a small road opposed to a main thoroughfare? I have, because, excuse me, because what you're doing is you're directing, the only people who might use this down here, which is closest to 139, are the people who are not going to shopping, are not going to Route Three to go to work, because they can't make that left turn without putting their life in danger. So, I'll say eighty-twenty, eighty percent of the traffic is directed in, up Water Street and down Cross Street. It would, there's no real direct access to 139.
So, to answer your question, I have developments on main streets and developments on rural
Yeah, I'd just like to say that when, when Mr. Murphy submits his application to mass housing, that triggers hearings like we're having today. like we're having tonight. And that the Board of Selectmen is notified by Mass folks that this is going on and this is what our responsibilities are, to hold these hearings, to document concerns, and to forward those into Boston. So by him submitting his application, it's true, this is the plan that he sees. But he's right, that doesn't necessarily mean this is what he's going to end up with. But it triggers this process that we're going through. So I'll ask this lady.
Can I make a correction? I said a five-and-a-half-year supply. It's actually a 20-year supply of three-bedroom units.
Okay, I'll recognize this lady.
I'm sorry, this is my wife. So I can maybe do that? I just want to make one comment while I was fresh in everybody's mind. The school bus that goes down Water Street right now, I was just informed, does not go down Church Street anymore because of the construction, Cross Street, because of the construction vehicles and the damage to the road. So three to five years, I don't know where the school bus is going to go.
Hi, I'll make a comment on that. I drove down Cross Street the other day just to get a look at the development that's going on there. I won't be going down there anytime soon.
My name is Jane Cornan, I live at 260 Water Street. I'm Marty's wife. I just wanted to add in as far as the spirit of the project and the good neighbors that we at Pembroke try to consider. Our neighborhood, our neighborhood is pretty awesome. And the home at 274 was a very good friend of mine who had multiple offers. The purchase and sale was done as a single woman, Karen Tripelo. And at the closing, it came in as Red Castle. So I feel as if there was a fraud committed in the, in the, sneak your way in to get this project done because Michelle would have never sold to the developer because she is very good friends with all of us. And I think that should be kept in mind when you think about who you want to do a project with that's honest and really concerned about Pembroke, instead of concerned about the dollars.
Ask him.
Well, I don't have to ask, it happened. The purchase and sale was done in a different name than the LLC that showed up at the closing. So it was basically a, you know, a bait and switch. And at the last minute, you're closing after, after, you know, having turned down the other offers. And it's just, it's just a very shady...
Unsettling.
Unsettling practice. To somebody that wants to be our neighbor and talks about the good and the joy that he brings to people, it is, just wanted to add that to it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon. And Robert is my husband, he just spoke. We live at 268 Water Street. We bought a home in January of 2015. And I'm going to try for my voice not to crack like James did because it is emotional. And there are emotions at play here, and integrity. And we, we can't help but be emotional. But I think as neighbors, we've shared all of our concerns. I don't want to be redundant and repeat because everybody's done, has spoken so far, has done a great job expressing those concerns. I would like to again point out that we are 268 Water Street. This house right here, that will be the direct abutter to what is called Road A, the entrance, right in the middle of Water Street, going to this development. Now, when we bought our home two years ago, being probably the newest of residents there, we came to the town, we had looked at a lot of homes, as you know, when they're buying houses, you're doing a lot of looking with a wonderful real estate agent who's with us tonight. And we saw this home and, you know, there's those times when you just say, this is it. It was the street, the neighborhood, the house, everything about it. And also, I did call the town. And at that time, I was told, oh yeah, you back up to Wetlands and it's beautiful area and, you know, all that good stuff. And so we made our purchase. And next door to us, to the left of us, is Marty and Jane in their beautiful home. And to the right of us were the Lennighans, Michelle and Brian. They had to leave our neighborhood because of personal family issues or they probably would not have. So they left, they sold their house in good faith. And we're sad to see them go, they were nice neighbors. Now, that very house is between, the drive or the road to the development is between my house and what was Michelle's house. So I'm now going to be a corner lot. If I had come to this neighborhood, hopefully not, when this development were in place, I would have been looking at a roadway, an entrance, that would run right along the side of my house, out my living room window. I would not have bought this home. It would not have been anything that would have been attractive to me. Because now, instead of having a neighbor's driveway so many feet from my house, I'm going to have a roadway with potentially 68 residents. That's, I don't know, another 120 cars, if not more, because who has one car in their family today? Driving in and out of this road on a daily basis at different times, all different times. That's where I'm going to be beside. Doesn't make sense to me, hurts me terribly. And I know that, again, that's my personal feelings and my heartfelt sentiments, but I do think I share them with the neighborhood. Yes, Marty's right, the value of our home is right down. We bear the cost, there's no doubt. The makeup of this lovely, and you can come to my home, any one of you anytime as well, and tour the whole area. The makeup of this beautiful, what I saw as an old New England country road with lovely homes, antique homes, lovely homes. Everybody cares for their homes and takes care of them. And it's a nice neighborhood, friendly neighborhood, a wonderful neighborhood for children, young kids. And now, double the size of the residents that we already have, triple the size of the traffic on streets that cannot even take the traffic that exists today. It goes on and on. And I know I'm being redundant with what everything was already said. So you, I would hope that all of you sitting here in front of us listens to us, takes us seriously in how much this is the wrong place for this development. Now, that's not even to mention all of the environmental conservation issues we've brought up, which are serious and also important to us because we care about Pembroke. Wrong place, wrong time, wrong everything. And I personally request that our spokesmen, our leaders request to deny this at every level and every shape and form.
My name is Christine Perkins-Kahn. I'm an attorney. I happen to live, unfortunately for me, at 275 Water Street, right here on the map. We bought our house almost 12 years ago in April of 2005. And this map is so outdated that it still reflects the prior owners to us, the Nicolos. Now, this map is so outdated that it reflects the prior owners 12 years ago, what other things on this map are totally inaccurate? Not to mention the wetlands, the size of the road, the angle of the road, the intersection with 139, which, sir, is not as depicted on this map. Not to mention it doesn't even depict the other roadway at all that will bear at least half or more of the traffic that we all rely upon to get in and out of this tiny neighborhood. Now, you can see on this map that the road is depicted as being approximately, it says 45 feet wide. No. This road is not 45 feet wide. The map is wrong. It is 20 feet wide at the widest point, as one of my very clever neighbors here measured. At the widest point actually happens to be near my mailbox, which is not at this intersection of this gigantic 50-foot road that they propose directly across from our house with lights shining into our house day and night. Now, as far as this road, this access road is concerned, they are proposing to destroy the character of the neighborhood in order to put in this giant roadway because it is going to take away the existing accoutrements to that property, such as a pool, landscaping. There's also a basketball court, I think? And, you know, I don't know, other trees, bushes, whatever. Basically, there is no way, as the new neighbors indicated, that they could even fit a 50-foot road. I don't know where they got these measurements from, but it's just not possible. Because this house goes over so far that there would be no way to build this road without destroying the house, basically. They would have to take down the house. Right now, there's tenants living in the house. Now, this man bought this house under false pretenses, as we've already heard. And then he has been renting it to tenants. Now, he didn't even rent it at all for the first year. And we were like, what, this is very strange. You know, why is this house empty? Well, now we know why. Because he didn't buy it for the purpose of renting it. He bought it for the purpose of destroying it. Something I want to mention just before I forget, because I may forget, is that I think many of the neighbors here have prepared letters that they would like to give to the Board of Selectmen if we can do that somehow. Over, okay, she's raising her hand. We give them to you?
Yes.
Okay, great. So if you have a letter, we'll drop them by you. But in particular, to our home, right here, 275, my husband and I are fortunate enough to have an eight-year-old son. Yay! But he is a child who's hearing impaired. He has special needs in that respect. And I have attached to this letter a copy of his most recent exam, which was this year, which clearly demonstrates that he has moderate to severe hearing loss. So if you install a 50-foot giant road directly across from our son, who rides a bike and plays, and there's no sidewalks, of course, it's a narrow, tiny country, winding country road, I think that there's a great risk to him physically from that being there. I don't know if there is any exception for that in the 40B law. I'm not an expert in that. But I would hope that they would at least take that into consideration, that that is not going to change. Our child is never going to get over hearing loss. He's had it since birth. So that's it. We also have many other things listed on this long list of objections, but one of them is, of course, and I think it was briefly touched on by some of the other speakers, that the memory care facility has also just gone in at the corner of Cross Street and 139. And I know everyone here is familiar with that. We don't even know yet what the traffic burden is actually going to be as a result of that. I mean, traffic studies aside, we don't know what boots on the ground it's going to be like. So for this tiny neighborhood of 65, I believe it was someone said, 65 houses, for all the streets combined, to already have the burden of this gigantic memory care facility right in our neighborhood with the traffic that goes along with that. And then this, that's just not acceptable. I just don't think it's fair. This is not the right neighborhood with this kind of a development. Only because, not because, you know, our houses are big, beautiful, or whatever, but only because of the density and the character of the neighborhood and the narrowness and dangerousness of the whole egress and access to the place. As far as the historical nature of this neighborhood, our house here happens to be partly built in 1700. This house here, I understand, I'm not exactly sure, the date, 16-something? Okay. This house here, which...
1702.
1702, okay? These are historic homes in a historic neighborhood. I don't know how Mr. Murphy can explain that this type of development would not destroy the character of the neighborhood. Could you explain that?
There is really nothing to explain in that regard. I mean, it is land that is available for development and those homes are still going to be there.
It hasn't been for 35 years.
So I don't know if it helps to explain that.
So as far as the other question, I think one of the selectmen here addressed the exact data that we have so far on 40B is concerned. I don't know, but I understood that there were other developments for 40B that were already underway or additional units were being added. Is that not correct?
Just the one.
Yes, okay. Just the one? So I would ask you respectfully to take all of these factors into consideration, everybody's letters, because I know everybody's written them and I know a lot of people have, you know, and that they spend a lot of time on it, that this is wrong for here. Not because it's in my backyard, honestly, but because it's on a wetland in a historic neighborhood that just accommodates the traffic from the people. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen, I'm part of the Department of Land Management. I'm also on the board of trustees for the Open Space Trust of Packet Landing. I did go on the Mass GIS website and I'm going to share that information with you. There are two vernal pools. One is directly in the vicinity of this residence, this proposed residence. And for those of you that might not know, a vernal pool is a breeding ground for various species. And there are a number of endangered species as the woman from the North-South River watershed told us about. So there is a vernal pool on this property. And the Massachusetts GIS, I would encourage you folks to look at it for your own resource and I will also share it with all of you. And as she directed, that we should probably use this information when we appeal to Mass Housing regarding the expansion of this project. So that's the big thing right here, our environment. You know, with all due respect to the beautiful homes and the historic nature of the town and the density of this project, we do need to be partnered, in partnership with the wildlife and the beautiful North River that does impact not only us but many towns upstream and downstream and the beauty of what has left of the North River for people to enjoy. And this project certainly would impede all that and impact that in a really negative way. The other thing that I would like to ask Mr. Murphy is, I grew up in Norwell. I'd really like to know where your projects are in Norwell so I can go and admire your good work and share that information with the rest of the folks in my neighborhood.
The one project that we have up in Norwell is Washington Woods. One project we have that's up is Washington Woods. And that is 40 units of similar type of homes proposed here. They're bigger than what's actually proposed here, but same shingle-style homes that you'd see in this development. And we're just finishing that up right now. It's just, you know where the forest is in 53? Just north of the forest. And we have another one that is in the works, the forest units, but it's still in firming phase. And those are condos. And another one that's got approvals, we just haven't started building yet. And that's 126 apartments off of Prospect Street in Norwell.
While you're still at the microphone, can you explain everybody, how you did purchase your house on Water Street?
It's through perfectly normal means. Just bought it through an LLC.
Who's the woman that bought, that contracted the buyer? Do you know her?
I don't think that matters.
I definitely don't.
I think we all know. I'm glad you all think so. I don't think it matters.
But why did you choose to conceal who the purchaser was? Why did you choose to do that?
Chairman, I really don't think this is relative to this.
Yeah, I don't think this is relative either.
All right. This is the end. Questions? Anyway, I think that's all I have for right now, unless anybody on the board here has a question.
At the end of all of this, I'm wondering, it was supposed to put on the table to have a moratorium for a year on affordable housing?
So we can get the people at home to hear your questions.
This gentleman proposed a one-year moratorium on affordable housing projects going forward. And I didn't hear what the rest of the board said.
Can we just have your name and your address, please?
My name is Al Mason. I own two properties on Pecat Landing.
Okay. Well, I believe we were going to address that at the end of the hearing.
Yeah, I intend to make the motion.
Okay. All right, so we will have something by the end of the meeting.
Okay. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Cormick. I live on 310 Water Street. I have a little bit of a cold, so hopefully you'll be there with me. I want to go on record to the camera to categorically oppose this project for the sole reason that it is irresponsible. It is environmentally irresponsible. The destruction of the aesthetic makeup of the neighborhood is irresponsible. The increased risk to our residents and our children is irresponsible. A project such as this, lacking response to, absent responsibility, is greed. And I ask you not to be in the mood, that you step up. Mr. Murphy himself said it. Well, it's a building of a lot, that's why I'm doing it. 40B is the back door to do it. Let's stop it now. I applaud the selectman who gave a moratorium. I request that we seek alternatives to make sure that that land is forever protected, that that neighborhood is forever protected, that no building, no project such as this catastrophe is ever built in this neighborhood again. That...
Hey, do we have any person that hasn't spoken yet that would like to come to the podium? If not, I have a lady that's already spoken, but why don't you come down again, ma'am?
Sorry. I just wanted to point out that the project at the Washington Woods, is that what it is, in Norwell, prior to being a 40B, it was a trailer park. So it's a totally different thing. If it was taking a trailer park, improving the land, and beautifying the town, that's one thing. This is the direct opposite of what happened in Norwell, so I just wanted to keep that under consideration.
Good point.
Thank you. Do we have anyone that we haven't heard from? Yes, sir.
My name is Matt Hickson. I live at 337 Water Street. Done there for a little over a year now. At first, I wanted to thank Marty and Walter. I honestly had no idea that this was even in the works, or that there was a meeting going on tonight. So if they hadn't dropped something in my mailbox for me, I wouldn't have known and been here to ease my wife's concerns as well. So I've lived in the property for about a year. Again, this goes back to why I bought the house there. Quiet neighborhood, not a lot of traffic on the street. I lived on West Down before. Couldn't take the kids out in the street, trick-or-treating. I have four-year-old twins. Was able to do that this past year, and I suspect that if this project goes forward in the next three to five years, that won't happen. So that's why I'd say thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't had a chance to speak? Please come up now. Yes, I see you here.
I've already spoken, don't want to take up the time, but I do want to say, how was the walkthrough communicated to the residents? Because I knew nothing about the walkthrough. I'm home every day, trust me. I would have jumped out of my pajamas so fast, and I would have been with you guys. And I just, this is a question, so communication wise.
I remember getting a notification. I don't know if it was, if there were a public notification that was given to the Board of Selectmen.
I think I went, I was a little bit disturbed that we weren't able to walk the property when we were there. But I did notice that, you know, that we were denied to walk the property because there were so many people. And I also noticed when I went by the river, that it was extremely high tide at that time that we had the meeting. So it probably wouldn't have been beneficial to the property owner at the time when we walked it, because it would have been flooded, so.
Yes, sir. We have someone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Chris Graham, and we own 271 Water Street Pembroke. We bought it last October, I guess. And yeah, we're cool neighbors, and we really enjoy being part of the town, trying to be active. I understand Mr. Murphy, I think he's pretty cool, I like this whole development thing, but not in this particular area, like everybody said. What else would I discuss? We reiterated, like, everyone's really discussed the traffic concerns. I feel like that's pretty valuable, but also move me out of there. Oh, I actually live directly across the street from it. I don't have a highlighter, but I'm sure someone here does, but I'm also sure that 271 Water Street, everyone's probably seen it before. It actually goes all the way down.
You go next to the cemetery.
Yeah, I'm right next to the cemetery. It's actually the limousine hose.
Yes.
Doesn't have your name on it though, Chris?
No, it has Sean's name on it. I'm not like him. Regardless, I am a developer, and we do do land development, so I do have a general understanding of what's going on here, maybe a little bit more than other people. Have graduated from my work in construction management, have successfully completed land development as well. So that helps, like, educate me or bring me up to speed with anybody. Like, I still think you're pretty cool, I just don't think this is a good spot to do it, I know everyone's beating up on you. Like, I'm like, I like that you own, like, everything in Pembroke. I'm not trying to be mean. I think that it's, like, maybe like across the street of Muckey's and that other piece of land that you have over there, might be a better spot. I have no idea, but like, I do know, I don't think it's a good spot. Why don't I? I have a four-year-old kid, and like, already walking down that street's kind of tough. I actually wanted to put like a removable speed bump in front of my street. I didn't know how cool, like, my neighbors would think it was. I figured you guys would hate it. But like, regardless, I felt like people already went really fast on my street. That's like the best way that I can word that. Does that make sense to you guys? Like, I feel like my neighbors right here that I see all the time, like, whoa, slow down, like, try and walk my kid and dog and stuff, like, can't really do both at the same time safely here. What, now you're going to triple it? Come on, that's not cool. So if you were going to do that, what you would have to do, or what would only make sense to do, would be to?
Do it during the winter?
Yeah, no, Murphy would have to spend a ton of money and make this whole street big with sidewalk and like a full real street. It's totally not that type of street right now. What do I think ultimately will happen? I think that he like overshot on this, tried to get this meeting, knows that he's going to backtrack or backpedal, I'm pretty sure everybody knows that. Like, the coolest thing for me would be like, yeah, go ahead, moratorium one year, sick, do it. What else do I think? I think like he could probably do like eight houses, do like giant mansions. Just like, do some giant, like, three giant mansions, make like the same money, crush it. Like, I don't know, I'm not cool with this thing happening. I like, think I, oh, we're having another kid right now, in March 20th, he's coming out. I'm, oh, I'm going to leave. This thing, I forgot that point. Pretty big deal, like, bought the house, totally did a ton of stuff, like, put a few hundred thousand bucks already into it, like, going to leave. Don't care. Going to move my family, might not even stay in the town anymore, like, not going to be on that street.
Isn't that sad?
Like, for real. Somebody have any questions or concerns? What did I say? Does it all make sense?
Good job.
Thanks, Chris.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Crossley. My husband Chuck and I live right here with the immediate abutters the whole way down to the river. I reiterate all the concerns everybody else has said, and our unique concern is, our property is lower than his property. He's been moving dirt around for the last 10 years, testing septic and piling it up, and we're probably a good 12 to 24 inches lower than he is, so anything he funnels into this retaining is just, we're afraid it's going to flood our land. We grow hay here, we grow crops for our animals, we supplement our income with it, and I just think it's going to destroy some of our livelihood. This is too close to our property, and I don't believe it's going to contain any of the groundwater or the rainwater that can now no longer go into the soil because it's plastered with cement. Thank you.
Yeah, Paul Kernan, 25 Old Land Road. I just have some questions about the permitting. Does he get to bypass permitting or because of the 40B provision?
Well, you would have to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that process is all established now because of the 40B designation. We're going to have the Board of Health and Conservation and other people involved. I'm not exactly sure what we can really stick to, because we do have rules for all of this, but because it's a 40B, there's some give and take back and forth. You can't really just tell them, this is how it's going to be, and that's it. Mr. Thorne might have another comment.
Well, I think what happens is that after this meeting, we will send a letter with all of your all's comments, along with the Board of Health and all the other various departments, and then we send a letter to Mass Housing, supporting it, not supporting it, raising concerns, whatever. Then it's up to Mass Housing to make the determination as to whether or not they're going to go forward with it. And then the Zoning Board of Appeals then will have a series of public hearings, required public hearings, in which the developer will present their plan. And that will allow you folks to attend all these meetings, and whether the plan gets modified or not, or whatever. So this is the very first step that the procedure has, where the selectmen, you know, invited the developer to come in and to present his plan, and obviously, you know, the fact that all you folks are here, you know, allows the board to go ahead and put together the letter, which I will write, you know, with the help of our executive assistant, to Mass Housing. So, and it'll include all the comments that have been made and all comments made by the department. This is just the first step.
So if Mass Housing approves it, does the town have any say in it?
Yeah, then it now goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Before any kind of permits issue, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold the series of hearings. It could be one, it could be 20 regarding the project.
Okay. I could, I just have a message for Mr. Murphy. I think that, you know, you're wasting your time. There's a lot of opposition to your project, and I think you're wasting your money, and you should go somewhere else.
Hi, my name is David Horney. I live at Pecat Landing. I really wasn't good at saying anything. I was going to ask you guys some questions. The last gentleman just really touched upon my experience. But before I say that, I really want to commend Arthur, and I want to commend the abutters. Okay, I built two homes. I won't be, I'm not really that good of a speaker, and I'm going to try my best to direct my questions to you, because I'm overwhelmed at the delusional stuff here. I built two homes. One I needed a variance, the zone of appeals. The other one I didn't. Both homes, I needed approval from the immediate abutters. One home, the one that didn't meet the barriers, that I had get zone of appeal, I needed signatures from 500-foot radius of the home I built. That's number one. So my heart goes out to these immediate abutters. And I don't know where Brian's heart is. I'm sorry, I had to say it. I don't get any of this. To me, this is all delusional, because he's wasting his lawyer's time, he's wasting everybody's time. If I was him, and that's my question to you guys, is, you've already answered the first one about the zoning appeal. The second, the first question I did have is, is the Conservation Commissioner here? Because shouldn't he have done this all beforehand? That's what I had to do. When I built my house, I had to come in, I was told by my lawyer to come in with all the signatures, the architectural plans, exact, not possible, not probable, not 12-years mapped. I had to come in with it exact. I was just a father. I was a newly father, I was a young kid, okay? I had to have all my Ts crossed and my Is dotted before I spoke to the people. And I just want to say that, that's all. All right? Good luck. I hope you rule in favor of the people, because this guy's delusional.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken like to speak?
Mr. Murphy, thank you for coming tonight. My name is George Howe. I'm at 285 Water Street. I'm not on the map, story of my life, but I'm actually on this property right here. I have horrible eyesight, find it up at 50, right? I'm going to be a little bit repetitive, but just for the sake of getting it on record. I'm a nine-and-a-half-year resident of Pembroke, proudly residing at 285 Water Street with my wife and two young children. We bought our house on Water Street in 2007 mainly because of its location, the rustic setting of the neighborhood, its horse farms, as well as its quiet charm. We probably overpaid a little bit for the house, still, but we're certainly willing to let future value and appreciation positively run its course. So fortunately, it appears that course has ended. So the proposed project raises a lot of concerns. We've all heard them tonight, and I agree wholeheartedly with all of them, not as eloquent as my neighbor Paul, but we've already lost our iconic horse farm to a large healthcare facility, which in addition to altering the face of our neighborhood, is about to negatively impact the traffic concerns for 65 existing homes and approximately 140 cars. And although we understand the 48 patients of the facility do not drive, their guests and a rotating staff of nurses and/or administrators do, we have yet to feel that impact, as it's not scheduled for completion until the fall of 2017. I certainly, as you've heard, I challenge any one of you to enter or exit our neighborhood, either from the west or the east, on Water Street or Cross Street, at any time of day or night, you will find the experience hazardous at best. Additionally, the condition of Water Street and Cross Street are and have been in disrepair since I've lived there, with narrow roads, no streetlights, several blind spots, and potholes and cracks that will in no doubt challenge the integrity of either your tire pressure or your axles. Building 68 more units with one or two cars, or 50 units, or 30, or 10, whatever the number may be, will create the potential for further safety issues. I mean, I too bought my house with a lot of joy at closing, Mr. Murphy. And as glad as I am at you being unapologetic for density questions, it just doesn't appear to be the right place for our neighborhood. So I respectfully ask Donna Pembroke to deny the building permit. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
James Stoller, I live at 38 Pecat Landing. So I don't have anything prepared, but I would, I would just urge everyone who hasn't spoken just to come up here and get on record just saying that you're actually going to object to this. Because I think hearing, the numbers and actually hearing it from people will go extremely far in helping push the decision in our favor. That's all I have. Thank you.
My name is Charles McCarthy. I live on, unfortunately, I don't live on Water Street, I live on Semestry. I have a question about this sewage treatment plant that you're proposing. Where's the water going? Where's the water going after it's treated?
Into the river, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, gray water.
There is a soil absorption system, which is just like everybody else's septic field. It's just much bigger. It goes into the ground.
Anyone else that hasn't been heard of that would like to ask a question?
Hi, I'm Carol Francis Chapman, 226 Water Street. Right here. So my concern was not only the wetlands here, but the wetlands in our property, which my husband has spoken about. My children were born in this house, literally born there, and they say they never want to leave. And if this happens, we're going to leave. So just going on the record, I hope that this project is fully denied. Thank you.
And we have another gentleman here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Jim put the challenge out to make sure that we're all recognized. I'm Mike Wagner. I'm here with Tracy, my wife. We live on 13 Old Landing Road. We also want to register our attachments to this project. I'm not going to be redundant or graphic on all of the issues that have already been discussed. From my perspective, we do a lot of work. I live, I work in Boston with the poor and I find it to be somewhat very worrisome that we're putting people who are at the lower end of the economic spectrum in an area that we know is going to be flooded. And I think that, you know, if I look at this from that perspective, it just doesn't look like the right place at the right time. So thank you.
Okay, well, if we have no other questions, I, we are recognized. Yes, all right.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
I'm Marty Crannan. I'm at 260. I did, I did mention earlier when I, when I addressed the committee about the assessed value of the land. And since that time, we've heard the word "buildable" a number of times. Is that an "buildable"? For 50 acres of land, is that assessed as buildable? Roughly, so my, my land is $200,000. This is a current, it's on the website. My land alone is $200,000. This is 200, this, so this is 200, this is 260. Is that assessed at a buildable rate?
I don't know the answer, but we have Kathy Salmon, assessor here, and if I could ask Kathy to answer your question.
It is not assessed as buildable. We have it assessed as unbuiltable and as wetland, just for clarification. The assessors don't determine the legality of whether or not you can build. But what we do do is we take all of the reasonable, available information that we have on projects. And if we see DEP wetlands maps saying that this is wet, we're going to consider that some of it is wet. Sometimes we get information from taxpayers telling us we've tried to perk it and it's wet. So there's a variety of ways that we get the information. Also, the lot that's in question does not have, I think it has a 40-foot frontage on the street. And so under current bylaws in Pembroke, you need a minimum of 150 frontage, even for a house lot.
But that's what it's trying to-
Right, but the question was on the assessment. So on the assessment on this lot on its own, which is what we're required to do prior to anybody purchasing and proposing something forward, to the best of the information that we had, we believed it to be wet and we believed it to be unbuiltable. And in fact, we, you know, any taxpayer always has the right to question their value and appeal to the board of assessors, and that value even has been appealed. And they always have the right even to then take it beyond the assessors to say, you know, to go to the next court level. And that has happened as well even as the buildable, the unbuiltable and wetland. So to restate, to the best of our ability, from what we could see, we believed it to be some portion wet and some portion unbuiltable, based on both its location, the DEP wetland, and not having enough frontage under the current bylaw to get in and do it.
Do you have any record of the owner of the land? It just, 10 years ago, I remember somebody saying that the owner of the land would petition to have it assessed as unbuiltable. And considering, I've put a significant amount of money into my property based on this unbuiltable assessment.
So I'm not aware of something from 10 years ago, but just to be clear, you don't petition the assessors to declare that it is something or it is not. You might say to us, you know, we have tried to, for instance, had we said, you have 50 acres of developable land, sometimes an owner will come in and say, here's the information of why it's not buildable. And they'll give us documentation. We've tried to perk it, we've tried to do, you know, these different things. And so you can request something of us and give us documentation that maybe we weren't aware of and that can be considered. But the assessors never determine the legality of whether or not you can build. To the best of our ability, we take the data that we have and look at it under the current bylaws that we have and with those different things, no frontage, wetland areas, we assess this as not being able to be developed. Now, obviously it has changed because there's now another piece involved. And what you're allowed to do under 40B has nothing to do with what you're allowed to do under the Pembroke zoning bylaws. And that's key to remember. So if something goes in under 40B, you don't have to meet that 150 frontage, 40,000 square feet for a lot. That's why you're allowed to do these developments that would be outside of something that would normally be allowed in town Pembroke.
So you're not, but, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't want to repeat the same question and I don't know if you have the answer, but it's just curious to me if over the last 35 years, the owner of this land has ever provided documentation that would state that this land was unbuilt.
I do not know if over the last 35 years they have presented.
I'd like to know on record as saying that 10 years ago, I believe it was stated that that petition was made by the builder.
Well, if I could say, Mr. Chairman, the land survey that's part of the application was a survey done on this property in 2002 with the intent of building a subdivision there. So they were looking as far back as 2002 to build a subdivision there. And, but what you're asking Kathy here, our chief assessor, is if the land was unbuiltable. Well, the land was unbuiltable, wet or not, due to zoning regulations. So they had, they had this property as large as the lot is, as a single-family home, because that's what it was zoned for and that's all that you could build there under the Pembroke zoning. They can't assess a property based on the possibility of a 40B, which supersedes all, most of Pembroke zoning bylaws.
I believe there was a 40B project that was presented to the state within the last 10 or 15 years.
I don't, I don't recall one for this particular property, but we can look into it.
I think that there was.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Kathy. Thank you, Judy. Not having any other questions.
I have a question. When would we, when would we know and what would we know about your decision for your reply to Mass Housing?
Well, we have a firm date on when we have to reply.
February 9th.
February 9th. We have to have in the hands, in Boston, all of the comments from the public, comments from the town boards, any comments at all, for or against. And we will make sure that we live up to that date.
Okay, and how, how will we find out what that letter says?
You can get a copy of it soon if it goes out as a public record.
I was going to say-
We're going to publish it on the website, the town website?
It's the best way to do it, I think. Yeah. Thank you. Before I adjourn the hearing, we've heard from a lot of people. I'm just going to ask Mr. Murphy if he had, if he'd like to make a closing statement of any kind or are you, are you okay with closing the hearing? Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Cara Littlefields. I live at 300 Water Street, which is down here somewhere. There's, some of my neighbors just want to meet up and point out about, I did talk to the police department and asked how many accidents we have had here and also at the Tom and Cross Street and 139. And in the past three years, we've had 43 accidents in that, in those two intersections. So by more than doubling this, you can expect that we're going to more than double those accidents. I'd also, while I'm up here, since I got up here, I'd like to point out that the corner of Water Street and Cross Street is a treacherous corner too. My daughter's best friend lives in the house on the corner of Cross Street. And those four girls, they, they were not allowed to cross the street because that corner is so bad till they were probably 12 years old. I mean, much to their chagrin. They, they really, as a mother, it's scary there. And now the middle schoolers and the high schoolers, that's where, where they congregate for the bus stop, 6:40 in the morning, in the dark. So the idea that we're going to be increasing the traffic down there by 80% is pretty scary. That's all.
I would just add that when we had the walkthrough, one of the people there was the chief of police and he was looking and made comments about some of those issues as well. So, Mr. Murphy, I recognize you with you-
Can I just ask one quick question? Sorry. I'm Larry Nagy. It's at 30 Cross Street, right about here somewhere. Quick question I had, I think it might be for Kathy. You had mentioned that Pembroke may have attained their goal versus the land area necessary for 40B. When do we get to know if that's the case? Or what's involved in that?
There's a timeline that's required. The state requires if you believe you have met your goals either by your 10% of your housing or your 1.5% landmass, when the first comprehensive permit hearing is held by the ZBA, by the zoning board of appeals, it is at that time that the town would notify both the applicant and the state to say, we believe we've met our required minimum and here's the documentation to it. So it's at that time, and I don't know when that ZBA permit will be. I don't think we, you know, we don't yet know when that will be. But when that happens, 15 days from that hearing, notification will go to the state, to the applicant, and the state will review it and make a decision on it. And the applicant has an opportunity to say, well, I disagree with, you know, one or more pieces of the documentation.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask Mr. Murphy one more question?
All right.
Let's say it all goes through. When would you start? As soon as possible. I don't know, that's what you answered, six months, a year? I guess it depends on the timing here, but we got approvals in the springtime. We'd be starting in early fall.
Okay.
So I guess in closing, I'll just thank the board for having us here tonight to go over the project. I'll just remind everybody that this is just a site eligibility application. So the state actually has to come back to us and say that, yes, it is an eligible site for 40B. It's at that point that we actually apply to the Town of Pembroke ZBA. So there's a lot to go in this process. We are really in the beginning stages. We're by no means, you know, adjudicating this, this project here tonight. And I do appreciate everybody's comments. And I'm sure over the course of the next six to nine months, there'll be plenty of hearings and plenty of opportunity for people to be heard.
Very good. Thank you. Before closing the hearing, let me, may I just make a comment on my own? I want to thank everybody that came here tonight. You're very orderly, very quiet. You listened to the instructions and you followed them through. And I think that made this a successful hearing. Everybody had a chance. And Mr. Murphy was very willing to try to answer all of your questions. That's what this process is all about. We're not trying to hide anything and we're not going to hide anything. So just keep in touch. I know you will. I know you're interested. So I'm going to close this public hearing and- Yes, I'm sorry, Arthur.
Sorry, I would move that the board of selectmen issue a letter of non-support for the proposed River Mice Village and that we support a moratorium of multi-unit buildings in the town for a period of one year from today.
Second.
Motion by Arthur and a second by Bill. Any questions or discussion?
I just have a comment to make. You all take a look around this room. There's symbols of the freedom, symbols of people protecting our freedom, which we all enjoy today. However, that does not give businesses the right to take advantage just because of the letter of the law.
Any other comments by the board? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of Arthur's motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. I deem it unanimous.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Good to see you again. All right. Okay, sir. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Move to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those in favor, aye.
But, you know, for schools up there, it's kind of hell, I don't know. I mean, this is not, this is...
Oh, I know.
And 139, I was hoping that I could stop and talk.
Somebody had mentioned it earlier, about the house design. It was such, it was such a pleasure. I liked working on it, it was about 50 years ago, I'd drive down the road, and everything was just all over the place.